Alright buddy. Thank you. Roll call.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Frank Scott.
Here.
Item two, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have no, I'll make a motion to accept this, the agenda is presented.
Simmons. We have a motion from Commissioner Scott, we have support from Commissioner Wiltie to approve the agenda as presented. And all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries, item three declarations of conflicts of interest, are there any?
I don't believe I have any.
Item four, review of minutes, we have minutes for March fourteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes.
They look them over, I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott?
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie, any further discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Item four B, March twenty first, twenty twenty four, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I look them over, I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott?
I'll support that.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie, any further discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries, item five, public comment and agenda, agenda item matters only, any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item six, we received correspondence from Verga County related to the support for ballot initiative, support for Michigan Kids Bill, Ingham County's support for statewide water affordability legislation, Tuscola County related to the support for ballot initiative, and West Branch Community Airport related to the airport open house. Do anybody want to touch on that, or are they going to touch on the open house for the airport when we get there? Okay. Those have been received and filed. Item seven, consent agenda. Um, do you guys want to take these individually?
Yeah.
Seven A, we have, uh, oh geez, yeah. Resolution to accept fiscal year twenty twenty three audit report. This resolution is sponsored by the Committee of the Whole, the Michigan Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires that a local unit having a population of four thousand or more shall obtain an annual audit of its financial records, accounts, and procedures. Stevenson and Company PC presented the fiscal year twenty twenty three audit report to the Board of Commissioners at their committee of the whole meeting held on March twenty first, twenty twenty four. Approval of the resolution will document the county's acceptance of the audit report and authorizes the auditor to file one copy with the state treasurer on or before March thirty first, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott? Support from Commissioner Mayhew, discussion, any? No? Roll call vote.
Uh, Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Seven B, resolution to accept a quote for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning maintenance services. This resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney, the Oglema County Boarding, the Oglema County Building and Sheriff's Office. Building depend on a functional heating, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC system to control the temperature, humidity, and purity of the air. The Oglema County Maintenance Supervisor received a quote from Johnson and Wood Mechanical Contractors for HVAC maintenance services. Approval of the resolution will accept the Johnson and Wood Mechanical Contract, Contractor Quote for a term beginning of November first, twenty twenty four through October thirty first, twenty twenty seven, at an annual cost not to exceed a thousand, two hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion to accept with conversation.
We have a motion, Commissioner Wiltie?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott? Discussion, Commissioner Wiltie?
Tim, you're going to look in to find out what this specifically went to, what is that?
Right, so it is the county building and the building the sheriff's office in. Uh, it's, uh, was originally presented to me as the jail, but what they intended to say was the old jail, which is really the sheriff's office. And this is a continuation, this is a contractor that's done the, uh, the servicing, if you will, for the system in the county building already. They're agreeing to add the sheriff's office building at no additional cost. And I'm a little surprised we didn't have a contract on that building because those boilers can be pretty complicated and they need to go through a certification process. I talked to Chris about that this morning and, uh, he's actually over there at the sheriff's office. He did find some issues with the boiler that's over there, so, um, all that coming to me, I'm just glad it was brought to his attention and he's working on it. Believe me, I don't understand all the mechanics of it. But once that's finished, uh, this group will also come in and take a look at that so that when they do come over to renew our licensing and, you know, the certification, everything will be functional. Um, this also includes other things, it's, uh, states in the resolution, so the air conditioning system, there's a roof unit over on the sheriff's building, it's included, uh, with the building we have, where's the air handler at the, which we hear at the county building, uh, which is included in this too. So I think a good contract, obviously, to have, um, this can be, as you know, pretty technical equipment, so it's good to have people who are familiar with it will be working on it.
Where'd you want to come from?
It's already budgeted in the building and grounds budget. It's a you can see this, Rob, this is a maintenance line, uh, equipment maintenance line that we have in there.
What? Yeah.
Commissioner Scott, did you have something?
Did we solicit for the bid or did they volunteer this?
I think Chris asked them for a quote because the contract, current contract ends on October thirty first. And when we do our inspections, they expect to see, uh, you know, document that says we have somebody like this available should anything happen.
Anything else, commissioners?
No.
This is from twenty. Tom, did you have something?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was, wasn't muted.
Uh, so this, this is through twenty twenty four through twenty twenty seven. Okay, so we're contracted. Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yep.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Item seven C, resolution to approve seamless docs renewal. This resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. On June eleventh, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty dash zero five to accept an annual licensing agreement with seamless docs. The seamless docs application provides a secure, cost-effective green initiative solution with improved time efficiency for county staff creating online forms or surveys. County officials are generally satisfied with the seamless docs platform, which facilitated processing thousands of documents each year since twenty twenty. Approval of the resolution will authorize a one-year licensing agreement with seamless docs and annual cost of nine thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars, eighty cents through June fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion, Commissioner Scott?
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie, discussion?
I have some discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
In this, on this program, what I see on here mostly is either people getting a pay raise because they've reached a, reached a plateau of their anniversary, or people who decided to retire, or people who decided to leave and go get a different job. That's what I see this, it's like for personnel actions is what I see it for.
Yep.
Do we really need a program like that for nine thousand dollars when we used to do it stubby pencil? By the, by the department heads?
So Commissioner Simmons, what you're seeing is one application. Uh, we have a number of other applications that are on there, for instance, travel expense vouchers. So any employee who goes on a, a conference on behalf of the county and has mileage to submit, the same system as our mileage form that they fill out, their number of miles that automatically calculates then what the rate is. There are any other expenses, it's listed there as well. And that goes, once approved by a department head, goes right to the clerk's office and you see it in claims. Uh, other documents, we have all of our, um, employment applications are available online as well. Uh, so any department that has an opening is able to use that and the employment application goes right to that department head. Uh, other things that we use it for, any budget amendments that departments request, there's a form for that, uh, that's there. We'd have all of our onboarding forms ready to go, we haven't, um, absolutely, you know, started doing this all online yet, but anybody who needs to sign our health insurance plan or they need to fill out a W four form, or it's a W four, whatever, and then the forms that we have, yeah. So all those forms anyway are loaded on there, we're still fine tuning them to make sure we've caught everything. And those are just a few applications, when we had the required COVID check-ins that we did for about a year and a half, uh, we used this system so employees could even use their phone as they're in the building, say, yes, I, I meet the criteria, I'm not sick, I don't have a fever, everything else. Uh, we were required to keep those by the state for a period of time and, uh, actually started that before we had this system and created quite a stack of papers that we had to maintain. But this system allowed us to do, and it was used over ten thousand times for that purpose, was it would create the PDF file and keep it all right in the computer, we never had to print those. And also, this is a utility part of this, uh, allowed us to print out a summary sheet, you know, employee A checked in at this time, checked in well. Every employee was listed on there on a spreadsheet, so we didn't even have to see the, the full PDF form. We could tell who was checking in and what time, et cetera. Uh, so those are just a few, uh, uses for it, I know the, uh, I believe it's the probate court has a number of forms on there, the prosecuting attorney does as well. So it's not just a, uh, an HR product, it's one that virtually any form that we have is eligible to be, to be used. And they've actually increased or expanded their software now and, and not prepared to go there yet, but we can actually accept payments online through that system, uh, if we wanted to set up for that. Uh, that's, would take a little bit more effort, you know, to set up, obviously, but, uh, so anybody maybe needing a building permit could submit payment along with their application. So a lot of other things that, that they could do, uh, but again, my, my point being, it's not just the personnel items.
They're getting stuff set up with their IT guys issue, right?
And actually, uh, Tom's been very helpful, uh, with other departments setting up their, their works as well. And, uh, there's, you know, different folders, uh, that are in the system, so, yeah, it's very, it, it has a lot of utility to it.
I don't disagree with, with kind of your statement, nine thousand dollars, a lot of money, and I think we did really use, utilize it extremely useful during, during COVID. Um, I mean, I don't foresee us going back to that, to where all those documents are needed. I think was brought up at the previous meeting is if one of these other programs had that similar capability, so we might not have to spend this nine thousand dollars.
We actually have had a couple of meetings with, uh, Novotime, uh, UKG, um, just getting that conversion set up. And we asked them about it and they said, no, they, they aren't capable, they are just a timesheet company and they interface with, uh, BSNA so they gets into payroll. Um, but yeah, that's, again, just one function, you know, that that one's capable of versus this program that gets us into those other areas.
Is there a way, like maybe next year at this time when we're looking to, to, uh, renew this again, that, that we can get a tab on, on how many documents? Um, over this period of time, in a year's time?
Absolutely, I can actually, I'll make a note of it, um, I can print out a summary now that shows what documents they are, like the, the personnel, uh, form, and it'll tell you how many times it's been used. I mean, it's just a really simple one, this form has been filled out this many times.
Because obviously.
Applications this many times.
Obviously, it's a, it's a time saver for employees, we're not, you know, taking time away from work, pick it for it to be inputted and.
And I really like the aspect, particularly with the personnel action requests, that you get those, you know, live.
Yes.
You're not waiting and it's, it's your rating of the system. Uh, and that's, um, a, a nice thing that if we had, you know, anything that involved only certain departments, we could make sure that they get notified of things when they happen. So, um, yeah, I think there's a lot of, a lot of good to that, but let me get that summary report out for you, I think you'll be impressed with how much it's gained use.
That's, well, the reason I ask that question, because the only thing I see is the personnel actions, you know, even stuff like that. I did not know what is, was extensive as it is, which would, and I can see the usefulness of that by far.
We do some A signatures in that program also for different, uh, bills and things like that. Um, if we were to go back to a pencil and paper, then we'd be talking to another company about scanning our P, P, paper so we can store that on, in cloud.
I hear you. I just asked it because the only, I saw.
Oh, it makes sense to ask, but.
I did not realize that there was a lot more to it than that.
Yeah. And then we, we're always talking about needing storage area.
So it's very helpful to all the departments by far.
Yeah, absolutely, you just talked about ten thousand pieces of paper. And many need duplicates.
And, and I can tell you, it's like any other software, we're, we're just scratching the surface, what it, what we can do with it. And it just takes a matter of getting in there and using it a few times, you start realizing that and then you're able to start thinking about, boy, the system, this process would be a lot smoother if we could just do it online and, so.
Okay, roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Uh, item eight, new business claims, claims totaled two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and three dollars and six cents. I believe Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Simmons reviewed bills?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead.
It would, would looked like a pretty high sum, two hundred and twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, was just basically, uh, some really big bills, uh, of our, our, uh, our, our share of the airport was on there, thirty-two thousand.
Um, that's annual kind of thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, uh, uh, what was the other big one? Uh, shoot.
Bring the cards always made.
Uh, my stuff, yeah, election.
Oh, elections, elections, fifty, fifty-four thousand dollars, but it's a hundred percent reimbursed by the state, so.
I hope it.
We get all, yeah, yeah, we open it.
No, we're waiting, we.
Right.
Still is.
Checks in the mail.
Hope they haven't changed the legislation on that.
Right. So it got right down to it, we probably were just, just over fifty thousand in, in bills, that's not too bad.
So the one thing I noticed was, um, and it surprised me, I'm, and try right in, right in sync, but I noticed the water bills this time. I mean, what was nine hundred and something, one was, um, is it three thousand and something, thirty thousand, three thousand and something for a water bill? Could have been at the jail, it was a big one.
Not in the jail.
And the other one could have been, um, this building. Um, or it could have been the annex, I don't know, because that's open twenty-four seven.
This is the annex.
Yeah, twenty-four seven, um, the water bill, so I was just surprised at how much water, the water bills are for the, for the colony. And, uh, not seeing that on the line, but.
It just stuck out to you.
We can start washing buses then.
Of course, if it's not water you're buying there, you're just spending electricity pumping out.
There is a well there.
Yeah, there's a well there.
Maybe you have a well here.
Any further discussion?
No. No, I'll make a motion to pass, so.
Commissioner Scott?
Oh, a second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons, no further discussion? Roll call vote.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Unfinished business?
I have none.
Item ten, Administrator slash Controllers Report.
In, in the report, there are two things I want to touch on here, the first, that we received notice from Teamsters Local Two Fourteen that they're ready to bargain. Um, we will, um, get with the negotiating committee after our meeting on April eighteenth. Uh, we'll have Matt Norfolk in to over just some fundamentals of bargaining and we'll start talking about some specifics in the, uh, contracts that we'll want to pay attention to. I do expect to hear from the other units relatively soon after, so, uh, that season is starting up, so we'll be, uh, ready to go.
What date, did you set up for that?
Uh, April eighteenth, committee, the whole meeting.
Oh, okay, that's better.
Yeah.
So, and, uh, so Matt.
Matt, did you want to say something?
No, just, uh, wanted you to know I was here and listening.
Hi.
Some eavesdropping.
Go ahead.
Second thing, in the report, there's a brief discussion about the Transit Director position. We do have a qualified candidate that the Transit Committee is scheduled to interview on April eighteenth at eleven thirty. That is a public meeting, so anybody want to sit in on that, you're certainly welcome to do, uh, do so. Uh, and that, that's, the whole process is right on schedule, uh, right now. Now, some things not on the agenda are on the, uh, report, the first one, I spoke with, uh, Ray Blamer from Transit. Um, we've been through a couple of proposals that were submitted. Uh, we had a RFP that was out for the bus wash system and one that was out for the heavy-duty lift. Uh, we did receive, uh, multiple responses, which was great, but in each case, there is only one response that meets all of the criteria that we put into the RFP. Uh, and what Ray has suggested, that, that, in all due respect to the Transit Committee, but rather than wait, he's anxious to get these things ordered and in. Uh, was curious if you would be interested in just having those on the committee, the whole meeting in a week? We go over them here because you have to approve the final purchase anyway and just go ahead and, and make that happen. The other proposals were, uh, alternatives to what we had asked for, for instance, with the bus system, it is a, uh, bus wash system, but it's battery operated and does not do exactly what we had put into the RFP. And the same is true with the heavy-duty lift, and again, I'm a little bit out of my league here talking about what a lift does, but this is the thing that literally lifts up the vehicles so they can work underneath them. And, uh, type that they want, or the type that we spec'd out, fits all of our vehicles, all the buses, for instance, will fit on that as well. Uh, and I appreciate there are other products out there, but we were very specific in terms of what we asked for and what MDOT said we could go ahead and put out to bid. So this request is only, uh, from Ray to help expedite the process. Otherwise, uh, April eighteenth, the Transit Committee would see this and they would make a recommendation to the board, but with only one proposal that meets the criteria for each, it almost seems redundant at that point, uh, you know, to have the extra meeting.
Can I add to that?
Go ahead.
Um, so we just need to keep in mind too, these are paid for through grants. So this is no, no cost to the transit, paid for through grants. These are those items that we've talked about now for months where we needed to get on, get more aggressive to get this taken care of, so it was good to see that we did get quite a bit of feedback when it comes to different companies bidding it and I, I, I really support the fact that we keep moving it forward.
And, and I'm glad you mentioned that with, uh, grants, uh, one of the reasons Ray suggested expediting is these grants have to be obligated by, I think, September thirtieth, and he's concerned that, that we might not get the invoices in time. Um, I think we'll be okay, but, you know, I, I understand his nervousness about it.
Plus we have a transition going on.
I think we're okay putting it on the committee of the whole. Next, I mean, that's your question to us, correct?
Right, if you were willing to do that.
I, yeah, I think so. It's not that full of an agenda, or it shouldn't be.
No, um, it's, it's a normal, normal volume.
Are you guys who are on the Transit Committee, are you guys okay with that?
We are okay then, usually you don't, um, vote in a committee as a whole meeting, but I think in this case we have to and it's pre-planned that we're going to do that to make this move along quickly.
I don't think we're voting on it.
Vote on it, but it will be then forwarded to the next, uh, regular meeting where you would vote on it.
We're, we're by the way, the Transit Committee. We're bringing it right here right now.
Okay, we don't have a problem with that, no.
Okay.
Uh, the next item, uh, the last committee of the whole meeting, we talked about having the Oglema Hills Recreation Group in here at the next committee of the whole. Uh, after the meeting, uh, was over, a couple of members of the Oglema Hills
Rec.
Recreation Group, uh, said they had a conflict that day, would we be willing to go to the eighteenth? I don't see a problem with that, but that's your call, so, um, that was suggested, it would be good to have everybody at the.
Absolutely. Yeah, and Commissioner Simmons called me right away when she found out.
So we're good with that, but that's a reminder, uh, your next regular meeting will be on a Tuesday, April ninth, and that's the annual legalization meeting. That's the statutory date that we have to have that meeting, so what we've done with the schedule was move that regular meeting to that Tuesday the ninth, rather than the eleventh.
That'll be eight AM.
Eight AM.
At eight AM. And then Randy, of course, will be here to lay over the equalization data with.
He'll be here on Tuesday.
Pardon?
He'll be here enters. Okay.
Yeah, he'll, he'll be at the meeting, yeah, that's, that's why we, it's a statutory obligation, so, yeah.
Okay.
And that's, that's it, you'll see a big red banner across the next agenda to remind you as well, if you forget.
Anything for Administrator slash Controller, Commissioners?
Well, good.
Uh, elected officials and department head reports, we got building and grounds department, Tim, did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, this is a part of our effort to, uh, have departments report at least monthly to the board and you can see what Chris has provided, literally is a checklist of, uh, uh, issues that he's addressed over the past month. He did add the second page, just as a general information item about, uh, fixtures that they deal with in all of our buildings, which is kind of nice to know. Uh, but these are things that they, uh, keep track of daily, uh, cleaning and so on. And that's, that's it, then. If there's any questions?
Questions?
Tim, can I just add on, I spoke to Tim the other day about getting estimates for the Sheriff's Department building, just to remove out all of the facade that's falling down and even just paint the block. The current sheriff's building.
Yeah. Is there stuff falling?
Oh, yeah, it's been falling down for a while, getting worse. So I'd ask Tim if he could talk to Chris about getting estimates, just take off that fallen down facade and just paint it, you know, I mean, limited costs, I would think, would make, make the building look a lot better. I, my suggestion is, is I would suggest that we wait till after May seventh to make that final decision.
Well, we're talking minimal, we're not talking about any, this is just like, literally, there's a piece that's been falling off for.
Oh, okay, just, okay, I thought you.
Kind of a cosmetic brief.
Okay.
Fixer, correct, am I, am I interpreting?
Look to remove that and then to paint the block, but I mean, if anything, it just gets ballroom, we get an idea where we're at and.
No, we don't have to do it.
We don't have to do it right away, but it'd be nice to get it done.
Find out how much it costs.
How big of an area we're talking about?
It's the, basically the whole, that whole facade around the whole building is falling apart.
The top three foot.
The top.
The top three foot, it's that aluminum or metal or whatever that is.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. Yeah, and it probably needs to be done, but I think, um, Ray would like to wait, I wouldn't like to make a decision on that right away.
Yeah, I think just, just get a, so we get some ideas of some costs.
And I would like to go look at it also.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, registered deeds, there's a report on there as well.
Yeah, we had that actually on the agenda at the last regular meeting, but the document that came over was not the report, it was like a cover page for something else, so this is a substitute for, uh, for what you would have had last month. And, uh, the registered deeds is on the schedule for the first regular meeting for the reports, so next, starting in April, you'll see it at the next meeting as well, but then you'll see it just once a month.
Other elected officials and private heads, treasurer?
For today, he's like a show and tell. Good evening, everyone, Karen Piglowski, you're Oglema County Treasurer. I wanted to mention tonight that tax settlement is complete, but it came in lower than what I expected. I was expecting with the way the economy is to have a much, uh, greater inflated tax rule this year, but we came in at three million, fifty thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and from the original rule to the delinquency, we brought in eight point eight one seven percent as a delinquent tax rule. Um, compared to last year in twenty twenty-two, I don't really have an apples-to-apples comparison because we had the Rifle River assessment on the tax rule last year and thirty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars of our delinquent rule last year was the Rifle River delinquency. So I really don't have an apples-to-apples comparison last year to this year for you. It's kind of skewed a little bit because of that one-time Rifle River dream.
Excuse me, um, what was, what was that total amount, three thou, three thou?
The delinquent rule this year is three million, fifty thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Thank you.
And eighty-two cents, fifty-one cents.
In other words, the last figure can be seven, seven hundred and fifty.
Could round up to seven fifty.
All right.
Um, I wanted to remind the public that tax foreclosure is Monday, April first, at the end of the business day. And at the close of business today, we have sixty-three parcels that are headed to foreclosure, of which twenty-two are uh, residential homes.
Wow.
So I'm hoping that I'm super busy on Monday and everyone gets in here and pays. I did reach out to anyone I could find a phone number to that is actually homesteaded property, I reached out to everyone I could today. So I'm hoping, hoping that I have a line of people all day long.
Yeah, I mean, well, everybody's off, right?
Building is closed tomorrow.
Can I talk to you after the meeting, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, we did make sure that the QR code on our website is accurate, so people can scan and pay over the weekend by credit card and of course, we will process all credit cards on Tuesday morning, anybody that pays on Monday by credit card.
Oh, nice.
After hours, we will process all of those as well.
Thank you.
To avoid foreclosures. Um, lastly, I have a show and tell for you, our land bank project at fourteen fifty East State Road is complete. This is the before and the after photos of a cleaned-up property in Churchill Township.
What address is that?
Fourteen fifty East State Road.
Selkirk.
Selkirk, it was a burnt-down residential, had been sitting there for many years, went through the foreclosure process, transferred the land bank, and now looks like this.
Now it's valuable property.
And we have three interested buyers, so hopefully, hopefully it will be on the market long and it'll be back on our cash flow. hopefully it will be on the market long and it'll be back on our cash flow.
Okay, does it, does it come in?
Great job.
Uh, our land bank was basically dead in the water until Karen took over and, uh, just wanna commend you for the great job in how well this is moving along and the grants that are coming in and, uh, I mean, it's different as day and night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that your place there on Rose City Road?
I'm sorry?
There's a place on Rose City Road you're tearing down, claiming.
Uh, so that's one forty-two West Rose City Road.
Well, the address.
Yeah, it's just outside the city limits. Yep, I'm just waiting on a DTE utility wrecking clearance. And once I have that, the building's coming down. You probably have already seen the big dead willow tree.
Yep.
Is removed. That already made a huge difference in that property.
Good job, Karen.
Yep.
Nice.
Great job.
And I see you.
If it's okay with you, I'd like to have Phil talk to you.
Okay, is that okay with you?
I think that was the EDC, but absolutely.
Can we take a vote on this?
My good evening, my name is Phil Durst. I am representing Michigan State University Extension and you're okay with that? Pretty close to Kyle and Spitzel. Anyway, um,
Yeah, TV.
So, as most of you know, I work with cattle producers on, in the area of cattle health issues, okay? Then, you know, in the area of TB that, uh, Mr. Scott brought up, um, there has been a lot of fatigue among farmers and sports people about this issue because it's been going on now for over twenty years. In December, I was at a meeting and heard something that made me see the things in a whole new light, right? It was a young woman who told her story of being infected by bovine TB and how it almost killed her. So that, just to put it in a whole new context, cause I've always just talked about it in the context of deer or cattle. People is kind of like not thought of. But here was a person describing how she had it. And so I wanted it to go to a broader audience. And I worked with two medical doctors who were working with her. I worked with, with other people and I, I wrote an article that, um, I have seven copies there, which should get around to everybody. Um, this is getting, it's gonna get a lot of press play. This is already out in the agricultural press. It's gonna be in the sports, uh, persons press through Michigan Allergers. They've already agreed to carry the article. Um, I expect to see it maybe in local press as well as in, uh, press in major metropolitan areas in the state. So I, I commend the article to you to read, to hear the story of Adriana Jarrett, who almost died from bovine TB. Um, really, it's a very compelling story. So it helps us to see things differently when we view it in the context of what can happen in person. May I follow that up with another story about bovine TB? There was a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So yesterday I was involved, uh, in a project up in, um, Alpena County. In which I, and I mentioned this to you before, that there's a vaccinate, a deer vaccination program for bovine TB. Right? This is a study, this is a limited study by USDA Wildlife Services, uh, out of Fort Collins, Colorado. And, and so what they're doing, uh, and then what I did was, and I was simply manual labor, I want you to understand that. Um, but, but what, what we were doing was they're, they're, they're putting a vaccine, oral vaccine in bait for deer in specific areas. And then they'll follow up that by shooting deer and then checking blood levels for the antibodies to the back, to the, to the disease. Okay? So the vaccine, first of all, is a common, very, uh, common vaccine for TB. It's called BCG. And, um, what we were doing was preparing bait plugs, if you will. They call them vaccine delivery units, VDU's. And these plugs were basically made from halage and some other grains that are mashed together. And then there's a vaccine. I'll call it a pellet, but it's more like a gel pellet that goes into that. And we prepared three, we prepared, you know, we prepared, I prepared three hundred of them, took them to three farms where they, and they have fifteen farms lined up up there, where they have been putting out these things without the vaccine. In a grid of twenty by, by five, so a hundred places, um, on per farm. And they put them out and then they, they have cameras set on it and then they check them each day. They put that out for five days without the vaccine. They checked it each day to make sure deer were hitting it, deer were eating them. And then followed by two days of with the vaccine. And so I was putting out, uh, one of the, putting out three farms with the vaccine in. Um, and so this is really a, a landmark study. This is not been done anywhere else in the world, right? Where they're actually doing this in the wild with deer, trying to vaccinate deer through use of an oral vaccine like this. And so, uh, what, what they'll, uh, do then, when they, in about eight weeks, they'll kill deer and, and, and start, um, measuring the antibody levels in the blood. If this works, which it's presumed that will work, that it vaccinates in the majority of deer in an area. Then really, it could be done on a larger scale in which we can control this, we can reduce the spread of disease. Vaccine never keeps people from getting disease. What a vaccine does, it limits the symptoms of the disease and the ability to transmit the disease. So, and the animal resolves the disease faster, right? And so, you know, it, it won't eliminate TB. But what it will do is reduce the, the transmission so that eventually then it, it gets eliminated. So I'll keep you up to date on that study as I learn. Yes.
Well, people, well, when people go deer hunting then, will they be able to eat these deer?
Yes, it won't affect anything about the deer. They'll be safe to eat because it's, it's a vaccine that's given to people all the time.
So we have
From other countries.
We have a, um, nature park out there. Would it behoove us to?
At this point, it's not available for anything else other than this study.
I under, I understand what you're saying, but if it goes.
Future?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Cause I don't wanna lose any of our deer.
Alright, one more thing I'd like to say if I may. May I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Alright, so about two weeks ago, um, the, the news in dairy started just to buzz about a cattle disease in Texas that was affecting herds. And, and this is absolutely going around the nation, uh, as a buzz and farmers are talking about. I, I call it, farmers asking about this disease. On March twenty-fifth, and so it was, it was unidentified at first. What's going on with these cattle? In large herds in Texas turned out also in Mexico, turned up in Kansas as well. What's going on with these herds? Because it's an unidentified disease that has multiple symptoms apparently, right? On March twenty-fifth, so that's just three days ago, um, this, it was identified by, by, uh, by swabs, oral swabs and, and by, uh, culturing, uh, unpasteurizing law, that it's high pat AI. High path, highly pathogenic avian, that means birds influenza. Whoa, I thought we were talking about cattle here. So first time ever recorded in cattle. That this avian influenza, of which we have familiar with it because avian influenza has been in Michigan. It's killed flocks of birds, often backyard flocks. It's carried by migratory waterfowl. So migratory seasons, spring, fall, we have, generally we have outbreaks of avian, um, high pat avian influenza. And we warn producers, avian, or told your producers about the disease. Here it's been identified in cattle, right? Now, hasn't killed cattle. It does affect them production wise, uh, affects milk, affects, uh, dry matter intake, it affects, uh, some have had fever. A lot of the case definition is still not defined on this yet, but this is, this is just amazing news, okay? So, um, producers are very interested because even in Michigan, we have a lot of producers in Michigan who send their cattle to Kansas, send their heifer calves to Kansas to be raised as heifers, bring them back to the farm. And they'll, and then they'll milk them out here. So here we have a disease that's been identified already in Kansas. And we have producers who send their cattle to Kansas and bring them back. We have another producer who sends his cattle to Texas to be raised and bring them back two years later. Okay? So this is, this has a real potential impact on Michigan.
Yeah.
Question is now, should there be anything done? Well, we're still learning about it. At this point, there's no reason for panic or to close borders, okay? Uh, let you know, I've been involved with the state veterinarian on this. Uh, we've had some conversations, uh, you know, in Michigan State about this. So we're staying on top of it so that we can keep farmers informed of what the risks are, how to reduce risk and how to, to work with this.
What, just to go backwards for a minute, where, where is that study for the TB and the deer being done at?
That's being done in the TB area of Alpena and Alcona County.
Okay.
Are there any questions you have that I can answer about anything in the world?
No, the, the third thing's pretty interesting. We, it's definitely coming this way. I mean,
Yeah.
But it's a virus. It's influenza, which is a virus. So there is no treatment.
Right.
It, it is what it is.
No vaccine, so we just deal with it. But at this point, cattle seem to recover in ten to fourteen days. But, but they may not recover all their milk production.
They not recover all? Is that what you said?
They recover, yes, in ten to fourteen days. And at, what I've, I've not heard that mortality is an issue in cattle. I'm still trying to get more information on that. The, the information coming out of Texas has been very limited, if, if I may say so. Uh, they just haven't been very forthcoming, I don't think, um, in, in putting out information. But, um, they, they've described symptoms, they haven't mentioned mortality. Um, so it may be that the cattle are not, are not killed.
The cattle are getting it from the birds. Did I?
It's the case.
Yeah.
Okay. Because they've identified it in, in, in cattle. So how did that happen? That, that's the question. How does it happen? It could be defecation on feed, uh, contamination of feed. Anytime, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have a significant portion of a cattle herd affected, which is what they're saying happened, a significant portion, what is that, twenty percent? Is that thirty percent? Okay, of that, of animals in a herd affected, that somehow it has to be widespread and that be only through feed. It's not through tracking it in by, by foot, by foot, you know, stepping in a, in a fecal thing and taking it in. That's not it.
So they're looking at that then? Feed?
Well, they're looking at feed that's been contaminated.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
With droppings.
And you know, migratory birds can be pretty thick at times.
They are.
Yes, they can. They may have missed my
And they like feed.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Oh, thank you.
Like if you think about, uh, like the research about the TB.
Yes.
Like really, that could be extremely beneficial for the economies here in Michigan, cause a TB would get really bad in Ogumah County. You'd see October, November, people coming here, the gas stations, the bars and restaurants. I mean, there'd be huge hits. You know, this is really interesting.
There, there's no question, Charles, that, that the TB could impact the state greater than it has now.
It has.
There's no question that it is, has the potential to spread. You know, there was a deer in Benson County that was fell. That's farther than anybody's ever found in the state. So and we've already had it in Ogumah County in deer, but isolated cases.
Right.
Right.
Hopefully it won't be any more than that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Interesting. Do you have anything?
I have nothing tonight to report, but, um, Happy Easter to everyone.
Happy Easter as well.
Thank you.
Clerk?
Yep, Bart Gildon, you're Ogumah County Clerk. Um, just letting everybody know that the ballots were received yesterday to the, um, local jurisdictions and today they can begin going out. So those are, the absentee ballots are, um, being distributed now to people. Um, and then we have in my office, uh, my criminal court clerk was approached and asked to do interview for the probation officer up in probate court. And she accepted that position. It is kind of like a promotion for her, um, not within the same department, but it is a different side of the judicial, um, system that will give her an insane amount of experience. She's going to school to be, or she wants to go to school to be an attorney. So this is an amazing opportunity for her, um, more money, different union, whatever.
Better experience.
What?
Experience she needs to go onto where she wants to go.
Yes, I'm extremely excited for her. Um, so we're gonna be doing some shuffling. My family court clerk is going to change over to criminal. And then I need to replace the family court clerk. Um, so I don't need anything from you guys except for approval to do that. I already literally just two minutes ago got my first application. Um, it was a good application, so I'm excited about that. So I just need approval to move forward. So we can get this going and start my interviewing next week.
It's a full-time position?
Yep.
Is that, when is that individual leaving and going upstairs?
Next Friday is her last day, so she starts probate the following Monday.
Yeah, we're just.
I don't have.
No, me neither.
I don't either have a problem.
No problem.
And the good thing is, is, um, Judge Williams knows how much that Megan likes being involved in the election process. Um, he's still gonna let her work for me on election stuff, election night. Um, so, yeah, so it's, it's a amazing opportunity for her.
Good for her. Uh, any, any, did I miss any elected officials or department head reports? Uh, managers on the floor? Motion for adoption. Mission reports. Commissioner Simmons?
Well, uh, we went to the, um, expo, um, information about the, um, villages that were gonna be, uh, uh, in May. Uh, we had, um, good, uh, responses from that. And we had, it's kinda mixed, you know, some people, um, are having a difficult time grasping their, their taxes may increase. But I think we made it as transparent as we could with the information that we gave to individuals that stopped at their table. And there's quite a few of them. And, uh, so they understood better what, what this meant. And I showed Tim yesterday that I, I did it mathematically. And, and I showed it to three people during the day before, before that night. And everybody looked at it with a big question marks in their eyes and scratching their heads that told me they didn't understand it. So I, then I had to go home and redo everything. And I put it all in verbiage without the man. I just explained, I have four bullets there that explain it pretty easily where everyone can understand it. And they don't have to look at math equations, cause it's all explained to them right there. And, uh, that really did help a lot, um, at the expo, cause then people understood what, what that means on the ballot for the, um, for the, uh, tax rate to go back up to eight point five for, for all concerned on that ballot. So we'll have to wait and see. I'd, I'd say we need to get back out, we need to get out there to organizations and to individuals, your friends or whatever. And, and give this information to them, hand this information so they can read it. They can show their friends also. And it's pretty pretty easy to understand. So I was really felt good and I'm glad I did that earlier in the day, cause those question marks in their eyes didn't look good to me. I knew they didn't understand it, so I approached it a different way and they did understand that. When we're at the expo, there's no doubt in my mind they understood it. So that went pretty well. And they asked about other villages doing like, um, the other two that were on there. But the good part of it was, we had a sample ballot there. And, uh, people could see what, what was actually gonna be on the ballot.
Oh, that's
And that was very helpful. And they could see where it was on the ballot. And that was very helpful. And, uh, we, the things that they wanted to explain, we explained it. They were pretty self-explanatory. Renewals for the, for the school. And then we talked about the, um, animal shelter services that we need so badly um, for the county, cause our animal control officer is a very busy man. And, um, so like I said, that whole thing went really, really well. And, um, Commissioner Rosie has all the information about the, um, what the transit, we already discussed that somewhat tonight. So, so I feel pretty good. So I, we need to schedule, um, meetings with the organizations to pass out this information. I need to make more information like that because it was so easy to understand. And it made the headly, uh, look not as complex as people think it is. So it went well.
Commissioner Ray?
I went to Rose City and they had trouble with their oh, the deal Randy was telling us to be S and A.
BSN software?
Yeah, they had trouble with that. And they come up with the conclusion that it was, uh, February twenty-ninth that messed that up. Wasn't figured in and they had a, lady had a quite a war with them. Uh, good hour, got new fire gear and a tornado siren.
Oh.
And clackies having, clacking townships having trouble with extra dumpers, I guess you'd call it. They're gonna go with dump carts.
Actually dumpers.
Extra dumpers?
Yeah, people go in there and dump and they don't live there.
Wow.
So they're gonna have dump carts. That's pretty much it for me.
Commissioner Scott?
I went to, uh, Ogumah Township. Uh, nothing much really going on there. The airport board met last week, uh, we're presented with our audit and things looked very good the year. And we looked over the proposed budget for twenty-five for the last month and passed that. And then, uh, the Experimental Aircraft Association, that's our local chapter, is putting on an open house cookout party, April thirteenth. an open house cookout party, April thirteenth on Saturday uh, from eleven to two. And uh, looks like free lunch from the Cedar Tavern and Sand Lake Bar. Anything to attach? They'll have some different planes there and things like that, and it sounds pretty good. This, this is put on by the Experimental Experimental Aircraft Association. This is not the uh, the fly-in that we have in June, but it's a pretty neat little cookout. Went to uh, Road Commission. They, their audit, they, Nathan Miller was there uh, giving their audit review. Uh, they came out with about a forty-four percent fund balance. Some of that is uh, some of that is called for, though they have three trucks on order that will be coming out of that. Uh, but uh, they're doing very well. Talked, uh, they signed, uh, agreed on some contracts, some township contracts. Uh, Logan, uh, Ogumah Township, uh, uh, issues. And uh, went ahead and voted to accept uh, Bolin asphalt contractor this year. So.
How many, how many uh, contractors they had, like, to choose from?
Well, I know in Ogumah Township, there's uh, three different, three different projects that relate to about uh, four miles.
No, I mean, like Bolins, do they have numerous different?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they do all. Yes, they do.
Proposals, and that's who they, okay.
Yeah, they bid it out. And uh, Bolins usually has, in the last few years, has come in pretty good. But seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars worth of paving. So uh, um, overlays.
Was there, what was there, since the winter was so uh, light?
They have a lot of salt left over.
Is that why their budget, I mean, their budget is?
Um, no, that was bought, that that salt that's sitting in the barn is. Yeah, yeah, well, overtime hours, sure, sure. Uh, and while the three trucks represent over a million dollars. One truck's been on our order for two years. Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the supply chain. So, um, yep, and that's, that's, that's what I, where I've been.
Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, I gave my Mills Township report for March at the last meeting, but just have a little add to that. The library is still closed, although they had the water issues, and there's, you know, the financial issues, water's fixed. Water issues are are fixed, I'm almost not sure they're a hundred percent now. But they're trying to get money from the insurance to pay the staff for the downtime. And they don't have a lot of money left to operate, so there is communication between the libraries and the township, and the library attorneys and township attorneys are looking into it. So hopefully they'll stay consistent, and the bottom line is, is that's a very important library to a lot of kids, especially in Mills Township. And um, they just need to figure out what's gonna be the best path to be able to get a library back open in Mills Township.
Why don't they put it on for a village, like?
There might be that possibility. I I know they're.
It's pretty simple. Simple, let the people vote.
Right, right. I think that might be what might happen. I know from years past, you know, there's no representation from Mills Township with the library, and there should be representation, you know, and I think to move forward, those are some of the challenges that they have to sit down and get figured out. The bottom line right now is not right for the kids, because a lot of our kids use that, because, you know, and we just, some, some of the homes there don't have internet, you know, and internet's so important, and so we've got to get that building back open or whatever it's gonna be, so, you know, our children can get back in the library.
See, Richland, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry, but but Richland used some of their ARPA funds to keep that open until they can get it on for a village, and then the people can 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 vote to continue it. But um, I thought that was amazing of the board to, to do.
Yeah, and I know Mills Township gave the library, you know, money last year. It's just there was some things they were looking into legally wise and want to make sure everything was right. Um, Scuba Lake Beach Project's coming along, again, all local contractors. That's gonna be beautiful when it's done. Really, really awesome. Uh, that'll be done real soon. Light officers back to work in Mills Township, that's a good thing. Uh, Rose City, uh, Road Commission, Craig, you you.
No.
Under that out. Transit, we had talked a little bit about that tonight, uh, you know, we had our transit meeting last Thursday. Just feel very blessed. We have such a great committee of people that all just truly care to see the transit strive and you know, it's exciting to be online and you see that video, that two-minute video of Ogumah County, the buses and that's cool, and that's really neat seeing that stuff. So that, I'd really like the direction that's setting our construction on the the building, now weather's getting nicer, they're ramping that up more. We don't know exactly when that'll be finished, but there's still quite a bit of work to do. But it's good to see the other items we've talked about getting, getting worked on out there. Um, and then I asked him, or the committee asked to make sure we are getting that out to as many people as we can, the application for the director. Because we realize, you know, it's, it's a big job, and we want to find the best possible candidate we can. And I know it sounds like we have a good one for our April eighteenth meeting, but it sure would be nice to have three good ones, so.
Then what's the deadline on that?
Uh, we don't open until Phil's.
Yep, yep, we don't really have a deadline, but we really haven't received, Brenda, you wanna add something?
Yeah, uh, the one thing I really liked at our last meeting that we had was Ray is also looking towards the future and the extra services he'd like to provide that would be more, more efficient for the people. And uh, if it comes to fruitation, I think the community would be real happy with it. So we can't say anything right now, but it's it, because we don't know if the funds are gonna be there or not. We have to wait until all this stuff is elected on this um, this, yeah, this, this year, so. Um, yeah, but I think the people would be pleasantly surprised with the additional, and he was talking about the Cummins and the Goons. You remember when he was doing that? One coming back, one going, yeah. So, and then it'd be wonderful, the wait times wouldn't be as long.
Absolutely. I've got a few more things. Headly Restoration Committee, we had another meeting last week, and Brenda spoke about the Tuesday night um, that they're right at the high school. Karen, can you make a point on, yeah, would you mind just?
So today, these mailers went out, the postcard with educational information on it, went in mail today to try to the mailing with the absentee ballots.
Yeah, we wanted, yeah, we wanted to coordinate to make sure that those got in the hands of the absentee voters about the same time, and that worked out real well. Great group effort by a lot of people.
I have a few extra if anybody wants to take.
I would, because of going to township meetings this week, they start next.
The Facebook page for the Headley, Karen, the exact name on the top is.
Ogumah County Headley Restoration, yes.
Yeah, so we have, we have this Facebook page now, Ogumah County Headley Restoration. If anybody'd like to click on that and like it, we'd appreciate it, or feel that you agree with us to share that, we would appreciate that as well.
One comment, I have to say about that. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think that little four, four um, points I have on that document I showed you yesterday would be conducive for people to take with them, to pass out to people so they understand it more. So we have lots of them, um, and I can make a lot more, but it brings uh, to light what the Headley, what what the Headley is really all about, rather than make it real complicated, we got four bullet forms, and it explains it pretty much.
Go ahead, Chris.
Couple of things, uh, OPIA Settlement Committee, um, we're getting to a point now, it's getting exciting. We're gonna start finding out some more information from, you know, people here on the ground in Ogumah County. Um, Tim, if anything you want to add to it, but we're working with Michigan State University, um, they've been great working with us. We're getting ready to launch, and we have started to launch surveys for our focus groups. So now we'll start being able to get some of that information, get some of that, you know, be able to get a little more meat to this and kind of see where we can go from there. Anything you want to add on that?
No, other than I'm behind on it, there's three more messages I gotta get out to the committee about this, but it is moving along, which it's been let's say a long time coming, we've been at this only probably less than a year, but it's um, what, three or four meetings just talking about this survey, so it's kind of nice to see it actually.
Well, I think it's good, I mean, there, there's been some, some word out that some of these counties have just shot right through it and realized they didn't use their funds properly, so I think we're doing good, I think we're collaborating with other counties, I think that's a good thing, so of course, we don't want to get stagnant on it, which we're not going to, but I think it's good that we're making sure the process is done right, and do you agree?
Did I, I I I could hear you guys, you guys couldn't hear me, I had poor reception. Did it sound like, uh, did I understand correctly, MSU, when, when this survey is actually uh, being conducted, they're gonna be somewhat present?
Well, they can be in person.
That's what it sounded to me like, did I misunderstand her?
Which we really want to try to have as many of those as we can. She, she sounded like she would.
For the needs assessment, yeah.
For the needs assessment, yeah.
I have a comment about that. I've heard some comments in the community, and they, they really like how the OPIA committee's handling this situation with that OPIA funds. So you must be doing a good job, because I'm hearing very positive comments.
So, June ten, we're working, we're trying. Yeah, and I just got one more, uh, this past Tuesday, we had our Ogumah County Housing Committee, that was our second one, it was a really good meeting. Lenny Avery with Target Alpina, who is the fiduciary of the Northeast Housing Partnership that I've been on with the Steering Committee, he came in and spoke for about fifty minutes. You know, we learned a lot, um, we've learned that we gotta discuss a few things and figure out how we want to try to um, you know, approach this and and stay aggressive. It is nice to report that of the eleven counties in it, there's only three that have formed a committee, which Mishda and these fiduciaries are really pushing for counties to do that, we're third of eleven counties, so we should be, you know, proud of that. And he had met with Karen at the land bank, there's not many of these counties that have land banks, I mean, our land bank is being very successful. Land Bank up in Alpina County is doing a development right now. Which is something who knows that we could maybe get into, it's gonna have to be a lot of communications, some smart thinking. But it's exciting, because I think really the direction that we've seen, and there's gonna be different options, but single-family homes, if we can get our, everything wrapped around that and get things in place, the, the sooner we can get processes in place, I think the sooner we'll be able to start seeing more single-family homes for sure coming up. Not saying that multi-unit complexes can't work, but I think the single-family homes is gonna be an area that we'll really be able to target, so we actually, as a committee, all agreed that we need to get a little more aggressive and take advantage, because all this money is just sitting there, who who wants it first? But you gotta have a plan in place, you gotta have, so we decided next month to have two meetings back-to-back weeks, because we don't, you know, we want to keep keep on it, so.
You're moving forward.
Yeah, so it's good.
Um, the OPIA, I I listened, I couldn't give it the input, but um, yeah, it's definitely moving, moving forward with the uh, needs assessment is next. Distributing and coming up with the data as far as what this community needs actually are, uh, my Michigan has taken a very active role. Um, from what I could understand, they're, they're doing, I hate to say that out loud, but I'm going to. They are really taking an active role in this, which is um, refreshing, this community uh, really, really needs this. Um, but anyways, also zoning uh, meeting I attended. Uh, there is a new business going in, uh, we approved, uh, M thirty-three in Greenwood Road. That uh, clearing right there, that's a rough corner, so it's gonna be kind of interesting. Um, but that, those woods there that they cleared quite a few years back, uh, there is a business going in there. He uh, presented last night, and it's kind of like a landscaping, almost seems like a greenhouse landscaping um, year-round. Uh, fairly large, it was, it was pretty impressive. Um, we approved those plans last night, so there will be more to come on that. Uh, also, the gravel pit, um, for the special use permit there on Quigley Road in Churchill Township, got approved last night, there was much discussion on it, there was residents present. Um, so we tried to uh, hear both sides of it, and uh, what we decided was hours of operation. Um, it's a dead-end road, it's a fairly large gravel pit. The main complaint there was noise, apparently there's some screening and and that equipment is quite large, or quite loud, excuse me. Um, and there's also quite a few kids that walk up and down that road to the bus stop, they have to walk to the corner of Quigley Road and uh, State Road there. Um, so we, we heard complaints and and we, we attempted to satisfy everybody, and everybody left there seeming uh, pretty happy with a eight to five um, hours of operation for the equipment, and then also a silent period from November fifteenth to November thirtieth. Uh, because we also heard hunting, a lot of people retired up there on a dead-end road and so people seemed fairly pleased with that, it was refreshing. Um, and then we heard some superficial plans on, uh, looked over, I should say, some more, some superficial plans on the sports complex, um, and that is now involved doing some things, some traffic studies. They were extremely superficial, nothing was uh, no motions were made. It was basically just continue with, with what you're doing and come back when there's, there's more, more information, so. Uh, the Personnel Committee, um, one of us was present. The other one did not show up. Uh, I think we had a pretty good discussion, there's gonna be a, a, a a lot more become of this, I I believe, um, some updated information, uh, we will present to you guys when we're ready. Um, when the other commissioner decides to look it over. So we'll be looking forward to input, simplifying some things. Um, I think we, we get some good information, some good insight, so that's it for me, township's meeting. Township start next, uh, meeting start next week, so that's it for me. We are going to have general public comment. Any in the room? Sir? Will it be longer than three minutes?
No. Hi, my name is Phil Durst, I'm representing the Economic Development Federation of Ogumah County. So I just wanted to pass along good news, first of all, you know, we have this revolving loan fund to help businesses to help them get started or expand or do something with their business. We've, we've already made one loan, I believe I relayed that to you earlier, it was Northern Bed and Biscuit, um, North Side Rose City. It's doing well, I I stopped in there several times and and just talked to Carrie Driscoll, the owner. Got lots of animals there, I had, I I wrote an article for them, and I solicited uh, some input from, to our customers. Wow, raving reviews from customers, okay. But we're working on a second loan application now for somebody else. Obviously, it's not, I'm not gonna reveal that who it is until it's finalized, but it's just about to buy on, that'll be a forty thousand dollar loan. And so we're, we're helping businesses expand or or go, and and that's important. We were at the Business Expo on Tuesday, and uh, we have a, a workshop coming up on April twenty-fifth with lenders on financing economic development in the county. So just wanted to relate that to you, it's breakfast workshop, um, at seven thirty in the morning on the April twenty-fifth.
Where at?
It's gonna be at Michigan Works Office.
You're gonna fix breakfast there?
We're not fixing breakfast, we'll bring something in.
For lenders?
So, we're, we're working with our community lenders to say, how can we work together better to finance economic development in this county? That's what it's about.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Happy Easter.
Any, any other general public comment? Any general public con on the phone? I did forget something, I apologize. Last night as well, the solar energy, we briefly touched on that with the zoning as well, uh, zoning the ordinance on it. And we've decided to wait to see what happens uh, in November, as far as what we're gonna do with solar energy for Ogumah County. So, still that petition, when's the deadline for that petition? When did you want those back by?
We have them back by, by beginning of May. How you doing?
When did you want them back in your hands? For April sixth in my head.
No, it was, it was like May, no later than May tenth, earlier, because first few days of May would be best. And when you, when you have these fill-out, who's ever flying these things around, you need to fill out that bottom at the part. At the bottom, who, who the.
Circulator. I forgot.
Circulator is.
I forgot about that. We do have a close, a close session, but there will be no business afterwards, correct? Oh, there may be, I apologize, or maybe business afterwards.
Maybe.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to consult with the county attorneys regarding specific litigation in the matter of Rock versus Ogumah County. And quote that MCL fifteen point two six eight E. That's the reasoning.
We have a motion for Commissioner Scott?
A second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons, roll cover.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mahew?
Yes.
Charles Wilson?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons? Breaks out.
We have a motion to go into closed session. Thank you.
Hey Sawyer, you got keys for the car? You wanna just go hang out out there, and as soon as we're done here, I'll come out. Close session.
We have a motion to come back into open session, roll cover.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution entering, giving our.
I'll support.
No, go ahead, finish that.
Give our legal team permission to.
Agreement to resolve pending litigation?
Yes.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Is there anything I need to add to that resolution? Does that sound okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Roll call vote.
Roger Mahew. Roger Mahew. Charles Wiltie.
No.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Thanks, Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Motion carries. Can I, can someone entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:00?
I'll entertain it.
Yeah. Support it. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. We are adjourned at 7:05. Have a good night, guys.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. De La Hante.
Thank you. Do I need to go sign anything?
You got to. You go on a point.